Set it up for a second.
Hello?
Hello, Jeff Connors in.
I think Tim said he was going to get on with me.
Yeah, we had a phone number on there too.
That looks like my phone number.
Okay.
There's Tim's number there.
Yeah. Fifteen seventy-two is my phone number and then I'm on the computer.
Okay.
As well.
Um.
Showing up twice.
So we've only got, we've got three and Bruce, we've got four members.
There's Bill.
Okay.
Bill out here.
Okay, we're recording.
I give us four, then we got Bruce. Can they hear us yet?
Yes, we're recording. I think they, can you hear okay Jeff?
It was on there Jeff Connor.
Yeah, present.
Tim, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Got any volume on anywhere?
Can you hear me?
Bill, Bill, are you there? There's Tim dropped out.
I think that was Jeff Connor, his shows up twice, he said that was his.
Okay Jeff, are you there?
Uh, Bill's here.
Okay, we got you looking for Jeff Connor, can you hear Jeff? Need to call him back.
Uh, he just needs to get, go back in through the Zoom link.
Got problem. Jeff, did you hear? All this fancy stuff, we can't talk to each other. You have to, you have to click on his name to get him in or?
No, I don't know what he's uh.
Jeff Connor, can you hear? Bill, you can still hear us, right?
Yes.
Oh, we lost him.
Okay.
I lost him, but I'm back on.
Okay.
Jeff, you're there, right?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Timmy Swannie Bart, you hear?
He's not on that.
I can hear you.
Fifteen seventy-two is your number, right Con, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, you show up twice on our little Zoom screen, so that's, that's Jeff's number as well.
But Tim's not.
What, Tim's, no.
Liz is not, anything to come back and Liz?
Getting any response?
Alright.
You want?
Uh, Jim, Jim can vote that. You Jim can vote?
Yes. Unless it's something he wants to.
I just one dizzy there, you have four, right, you got four, okay. Alright, it's uh, time to start the meeting, you guys follow along, um. Need to call to order, actually now the couple, Mr. Browning is here as a guest today. During the appeals board, so everybody speak up because I can't hear and these masks are terrible. Uh, first item is approval of the previous minutes. Uh, everybody read through them, I need a motion to approve. Make motion second. Seconded.
Second.
All opposed. Alright, does anybody have any report they want to turn in, Jeff Connor, you have anything?
No.
Uh Billy?
Yes sir.
Jim wanted, yeah, or Bruce? Okay. Uh, new, you want to jump to new business, do zoning appeals cases first?
Yeah, we'll let Bruce do those.
Okay, the, the first case we're looking at this month is B R A thirteen, uh, it's an application submitted by David Kim for a variance to allow the construction of a, of enclosed area underneath an existing deck. It would be a walled in pool enclosure, so there would be a built-in pool in, within that space and it's to be within one foot of the rear property line. That deck already received a, uh, variance, I believe, um, years ago to have the house and the, the deck back closed, so, um. The next one, you wanna?
Uh, as far as that goes, if the deck is existing, you're just gonna close it in.
They wanna, uh, put a roof under the deck, walls around it and put a pool underneath that, but it's to point eight feet of the rear line.
Anybody have anything about that? Billy, you have anything?
Uh, my only question would be if it's already been approved for variance in the past, I mean, you know, um, I mean, do they have buy down?
They do have the buy down, it's in the, uh, on Garrett Highway, uh, about two doors over from Munoz.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So they have enough room with the buy down and all?
Yeah. The difference for this is it's enclosed space, not a deck.
Right.
Do they have any? Go ahead Bruce.
Okay, second one, S E four ninety is an application submitted by, uh, Jason and Mary Borgesi, uh, for a six bedroom T B R U in, at, uh, five eighty-seven waterfront greens drive and that's in L R one.
Waterfront greens, yeah waterfront greens. Any issues on that one, you think though?
No, there's a lot of T B R Us already located, large ones in the, uh, developing.
Any concerns on this one, Bill, Jeff?
Uh, no, not for me.
Bruce? Send it on down.
Uh, third and final, uh, B R A fourteen, an application submitted by Stuart and Lizette Fox for a variance to allow the construction of single-family residence and a deck to within five feet of the rear. That property is located at Marsh Hill Road, uh, and that's in L R one as well.
That, that a fair down, I think?
No, this is, uh, there's three lots there on very steep property, um, that are vacant and they actually applied for a variance, uh, a couple of, maybe three or four months ago to put, uh, for a, for a house on one of those lots with relief, uh, from the setbacks on all four sides. Uh, that, that was denied on sheer size, um, and they resubmitted as to turn those three lots into two lots and build the house on one of those two, so they.
And want to get closes down the property.
They've increased the lot size by fifty percent. And they're only.
They're like ninety feet wide now?
I'm sorry?
So that makes it a ninety foot wide lot now, is that right?
Uh. That I'd have to check the site plan on.
We're easy? Pardon? We're easy?
No.
Box it. Tim, did you make the trip?
I did, sorry guys, I'm a little late.
I thought.
I'm here.
You're live and in person, man.
Okay.
That, that does make them ninety feet wide, the two lots that they've, are changing. They were sixty.
Yep.
They want to move it down.
Sounds good.
Either the lake front, right?
They're asking for, to build five feet from the rear.
That's right. You have any concern with it, uh, Bill or Tim or Jeff?
No, no, that's what they're doing, I think makes sense.
No.
Give me out of there?
I'm good.
Send it on down.
That's it. So the lot, we have one more that has been postponed for the solar and I think y'all were gonna talk about that separately, um, for the Newsome property, that's been postponed till next month and we're gonna look at that at a larger venue to give, um, the community a chance to speak their minds.
You want to stay for the, that part or not?
Say again?
You want to stay for this discussion on the water shed amendment?
I, I can.
It's up to you, I'm just asking.
I think Chad's, uh, better versed with, for all of it than I.
Just ask if you want to talk.
It'll be May twentieth at the, um, Garrett College Auditorium, seven P M. And we, we have a forty, forty-eight seat allotment there for the public, um, and I believe we're gonna push that limit. We've received about forty letters of discontent on that and.
Alright. We're going to the, uh, discussion of the fossil, deep creek, watershed zoning ordinance amendments.
Yeah, that's a good segue into the, uh, the one about solar, so I sent an email that was forwarded on behalf of the, uh, Deep Creek Watershed Zoning Board of Appeals, we've got Bob Browning here from the board and, uh, Bruce Swift is also a member of that board. You should have that, so they've, um, their statement was, "The applications for commercial solar arrays, solar farms are on the rise in Garrett County with several already in use or being constructed in the zoning district. These commercial solar arrays are not currently identified in our zoning ordinance and are being grouped in with section, a certain section with electric power generating plants. There are no specific conditions related to this section. In order to properly regulate this unrecognized use in the spirit and intent of the ordinance, we believe that these solar arrays need to be specifically identified in the ordinance with special conditions attached similar to what was done for fracking requirements, um, which was a category drilling for or removal of underground storage of natural gas. To accomplish this, we offer the following amendment to the watershed ordinance." So this would first of all define commercial solar energy as utility scale facility of solar energy collectors with the primary purpose of wholesale or retail sales of generated electricity, commonly referred to a solar farm. Um, and then we would add a new section that says, "The use would continue to require special exception, um, but all solar, solar energy collectors would be subject to the following minimum setbacks. Two thousand feet from the high water elevation line of Deep Creek Lake measured at twenty-four sixty-two above sea level and one thousand feet from the property line of any lot not owned or leased to the entity responsible for the commercial solar energy system." In general amendments, um, there are three ways amendments to the zoning ordinance can have it. It can either be the planning commission can do that, um, they can initiate it, the board accounting commissioners can initiate it anytime or a citizen can do it. Uh, there's not a specific path for the zoning board of appeals to do it, but I think it's proper as a, you know, as another board to listen to their request as a professional courtesy, then the planning commission can decide if you want to take that on and initiate that amendment.
Everybody following along with what's going on here with the, uh, proposed amendment to the, the solar field?
Uh, this is Jeff, I do, I understand and I, I wouldn't mind initiating the process for the, uh, uh, proposed amendment to the Deep Creek Watershed Zoning Ordinance, uh, with the two thousand and one thousand feet setbacks. That's, I mean, this, the lake is the biggest tourism, uh, biggest moneymaker in the county, we all know that and we talked about this before, I'd hate to see a solar farm encroach in on our tourism and all the dollars that follow with it, I, I can't, we can't make this lake look ugly, that's just my opinion.
It's time how we handle the fracking with two thousand feet above.
Has commercial been regarded?
Um. This is all happened somewhat quickly, so, uh, that is all we have, what we handled that. We did not define commercial solar any more than that statement I read. You know, if we were going to amend the ordinance, we would probably want to clarify a couple other things like, um, maybe making it clear, does this apply to, somebody wants to put some on their house or just a freestanding small one by their house, you know, so it'd probably be wise to, because that question will then come up, um, it would probably be wise if we don't want to stop those things from happening, clearly state that residential, um, accessory use is still permitted, so, there may be some other things that we would want to look at if we do amend it.
I think maybe we should, um, just compromise it right now, these things need their life expectancy and, in the case of the wind turbines, it's, the requirement is I think they put up a bond, they have to disassemble and restore the, you know, train and whatever, but, you know, I'm, I'm not against solar, but if there isn't some requirement that when these things have each their life expectancy that they're somehow in commission and recovered, I mean, it could be, you know, it could be a serious environmental problem or something, winter.
I think in general, there are probably three ways to handle this, you know, you can say, "We don't want to do this," or if you do want to do it, um, I think the board could say, "We just want to take exactly what has been provided to you and propose that that is adopted," or if you want to consider it and perhaps look at some things like, would we want to add language about decommissioning? So I think there, there are kind of a couple different ways you can.
That would be a kind of organization.
Yeah, that would be something where the plan, we could study it, staff could study it, you know, bring some different regulations for comparison, you know, with mentioning, you know, what do we want to do about residential? Do we want to add other things about decommissioning? Um, the setbacks, thousand feet from the property line, um, we, I think we did this with fracking that in that, you'd have to have an awful big lot when you look at that, so, um, we may want to look at that a little bit to say, what, what exactly does that mean when you start looking at the parcels in the watershed?
Well Bob, you have.
So.
Yes.
A, a question I would have too is regardless of what is done, should there be paths that would potentially allow modifications based upon technology that might come along to where they're not unsightly, um, or that, you know, where somebody's able to, to shield it from other people having to see it through means of, you know, um, tree fencing or whatever. I, I just, I think, um, we should make sure that we don't put ourselves in a box if better technology comes down the road that where it, it essentially can be put in in such a way that would be beneficial to developments and things like that without it being a, um, you know, a, a visual obstruction like, like it can be now, you know.
As a special exception, the zoning board does have power to put conditions on it now, so in terms of, in terms of screening or even decommissioning, I think the board would have the power now to say, "We're going to approve the use, but we're going to list these conditions that would have it apply with." That's not as strict as having a clear setback delineated, but the board does have some.
Is that kind of what you're asking for, Bob, is guideline to?
I, I think these are all excellent ideas, the one idea that's presented from the board is, is just one idea of many that I think needs to be considered, the decommissioning is, is a huge issue. A potential environmental impact study of some degree or another, not something crazy, but something that, you know, make sure that that we're not gonna have some environmental problem down the road would be appropriate, I think. And these are conditions that the board currently can put on, but it, you can argue those in court pretty easy, you know, with their, or whatever, but if it's in the ordinance, it sure would make it a lot better. I don't think that the zoning board personally as chairman of it, that we need to, the board needs to write this ordinance. You and the commissioners need to get together and work with whoever you think is appropriate to write the ordinance. We just know that there's a need for this ordinance.
Is that what you're, you're thinking is probably, probably the way we should go and try to come with a, take a little time and write something out that?
I think staff could certainly look into it a little more, maybe look at some other jurisdictions, what they've done for solar. I know Mountain Lake Park is working on it right now and they have some other things, so we could, uh, review those and kind of develop a framework, so this is what other jurisdictions are doing, this is how they're defining commercial, this is what they're allowing for residential and then the debate will be, okay, do we want to still use this setback, do we want to use that, do we want to, we could strengthen or weaken what's been proposed or adopt it as it is, but.
Just a way of clarification because we have people watching this. We're only talking about the Deep Creek Lake watershed.
Yeah, just Deep Creek Lake watershed, so the rest of the county is not zones and this would only apply in the deep.
And, and I think in this whole process, we don't want to lose track of land under rights property, I think there are places in the deep creek, the watershed where you could put a solar farm that you, you can't see from the lake. I mean, so.
Yeah, so that's something.
The special, except the board report, I think they just want the guideline put into the ordinance that gives you a little more.
I think that's a good point.
God and drink.
I think you can look at areas like that and, oh, if you set back, that's, oh, that thing, you know, you really need to look at, if you put this setback in there, what does that do to eat a lot around the lake? This is really what we want to have, because there are certain, a lot of places around the lake that are included in the watershed that are not really visible from the lake or, like Jim says, it's, it wouldn't be a real problem, I think. But, uh, this, this is a hot topic for a lot of folks and, and I'm, I kind of lean personally toward property rights too, but a lot of it is, you have a reasonable use of the property, but when we start talking, uh, fifty, hundred, hundred fifty acres of solar panels, not affectionate.
So. We need, we need to, I guess for lack of a better term, we need to put some substance into the ordinance that we want to, or contingencies in that we need to look at. How long a process is this, 'cause I know you have a case pending, that will come to you what, next month now, or how are you planning on going?
The hearing will come, uh, college and we'll, we'll proceed on and try and make a decision at that point. It is a special exception. You have to show it towards here than where else in the district and generally that's almost impossible, but we certainly can put restrictions like setbacks in decommissioning and maybe that's, that's a bit of precedence, although precedence to all the applying zone. It's better to have something than writing.
But, but what's your proposal? The planning commission take up, wouldn't be in time, wouldn't be a time to affect your May twentieth meeting?
Right, right.
Right?
Even, even if the planning commission today said, "We want to do exactly what you've written," you would then send it to the county commissioners, then the county commissioners have to hold a public hearing and then vote to adopt it, so I don't think there's time enough to.
That's what I've got.
I don't believe so, I don't think.
So you should be clear, you, parallel, separate issue, two parallel tracks.
Correct.
The, the, the one that's coming up next month, we'll, we'll deal with that one however we deal with it, but the, the problem, the concern from the zoning board is, this is a use that's not recognized in our ordinance, we're, we're grouping in with another one. We just need the tools to be able to.
Right.
Deal with the, the decommissioning is a great idea, um, that was just our first blush at this, at trying to give you an idea of what we're talking about. We used the fracking ordinance, being a successfully passed ordinance, as, as a kind of a roadmap for it, we're not saying that's the last straw or the last word on it, but our, our main goal here is to get the dialogue started and get, and get this ordinance.
But that's why I have to buy mine, because I know you had this coming up. Questions, the question to chat is, I, you want to, you want to, you want your staff to take this on and try to put the, put some framework together for us to try to review?
So you're, you all, you're not proposing that it consists of what you submitted, you're, you're proposing that they look at a lot of, of advances.
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, you know for best experience, we all do. Don't try and rush for changes in the zone.
Well, that's what I was concerned about when we got, when I saw you especially, 'cause I was thinking, okay, we need to try to do this in real time or do we have time to, you know, slow processing once a month?
Well, hopefully it's faster than our next discussion, which has been six years, I think.
I mean, it, I guess my question to you Chad is, how much input do you need from us at this point? You have a basic of, of footprint and you want to put something together and get, send it, give it to us and we can discuss it then?
I think staff can put together, you know, if the, if the planning commission can be thinking of things that are concerns to you, like you mentioned, uh, decommissioning or setbacks, we can kind of look at some other ordinances that have been adopted and I think we can come up with a general framework and then when it comes down to the details, planning commission can then take a look at that and say, okay, what kind of setback do we think is appropriate? You know, the opposite end of that is to say, no, we're not going to allow it all, that would be one extreme. The extreme we have now is, as you've mentioned, it's lumped in with a rather broad electric power generating, it's just a broad category, special exception everywhere. Uh, that puts a burden on the board because they don't have much to refer to in terms of setbacks or anything, so, you know, we can develop a framework and then the planning commission can kind of do some work on it and say, okay, how, how strict do we want to be, how, how lenient do we want to be in this, in this part?
So now you also, we still have to go to the commissioners with, I mean, I guess my question would be, do we want to throw something toward them now if they're gonna have the, the, uh?
Well, I think the planning commission.
Wherever all to try to take this home, that's the question I would have for them. If we, should we just go forward and say, here's what we're proposing to do, do you have any interest in, in doing it?
That's what I thought the process was to see.
I mean, is that the way we, is that the process, we, we can't pass this by ourselves, right?
No, you would transmit, this is what it says, "Proposals originated by the planning commission," that's what the board is asking the planning commission to take the initiative, to initiate a proposal to amend. Um, it says, "The planning commission may at any time transmit to the county commissioners any proposal for the amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal of the ordinance."
Yeah, I don't think you need our permission to look at it and.
No.
Obviously it's, we looked at the planning commission. As on the appeals board to identify this kind of issue and bring something to it.
But that's why, when I saw your, you know, iceberg up, that's, I know what I was thinking was, I mean, we want to prove, we want to send it to them and say, you guys have an interest in looking at it or?
I think you would send a specific proposal to them, I don't think you would just say, take a look, I think you would say, here's what we are proposing, we are initiating an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay.
I just want to add that, while I understand the process, there is, there, this is kind of an urgent issue, I know we're not going to be, we didn't come here expecting to do anything that would help us with the case coming up next one, but there is other interests, there is other pending applications, so we don't, I mean, we do need to act on this rather quickly, we can't afford sixty years less.
Until they order, you have to have a public hearing.
It, here's what it says, so, once you, you can at any time transmit that, so the planning commission can come up with things, we'll transmit it then, um, the county commissioners then have to, um, it says, "No amendment, I'm skinning this, shall become effective until after a public hearing by the county commissioners." Uh, so fourteen days prior to the fixed date, we have to put it in the paper, um, and then it's held at one of the county commissioners' public hearings, so.
But, but to his point, you could talk to my get, maybe you already have, could other applications be put on hold pending? If they haven't already been submitted, can we kind of put a moratorium on until the planning commission recommends?
I think moratoriums, you don't necessarily want to suspend regulating, um, the board may be able to say, considering the fact that the ordinance is going to change, we feel it's better to postpone this hearing. That's more of a legal question, I don't know if that's.
I'm not talking about the one in May, I'm talking about, you know, some other projects.
Yeah, I think that may be possible to say, we're.
We have to have county attorneys.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't want to step beyond that, I do know that just suspending.
I mean, that, that addresses Bruce's, I think, his concern is, and he's right, there's gonna be, there's gonna be things popping up there.
I'm going on vacation the next. I'm going on vacation the next two weeks, so I don't have much time to look at it in April. But I, it shouldn't take overly long time to at least give you guys a framework to say.
You said you were going on vacation?
Yes, I am, in April. So I don't know, I'm not going to have this.
So what's our fastest route, Chad? I mean, do we, did we send this to the planning commissioner for their, for their advice back? Or do we try to, do we try to change based on the comments we've heard here today before we submit it?
That's up to the planning commission. If you feel comfortable and want to say, we want to adopt exactly what is here, you can forward that to the plan, to the county commissioners anytime you want. If you feel like it should take a little more time and look at the ordinance a little closer, make sure we're doing this correctly. I, I don't want to weigh in one side the other about the solar issue. Just in general, I don't want to amend something in the ordinance and find we left a bunch of gaps and we, and we need to consider it thoughtfully before we put anything, yeah. Maybe not six years thoughtful consideration, but, but that's up to the planning commission. If you.
If, if playing devil's advocate, if we, we today vote to take on what was presented, verbiage that we have in front of us. And then we take it to the committee, that gets the ball rolling. How much could you amend that, this verbiage from here to there in the process?
You know, I think the county commissioners have their choice of whether they want to approve it. They would still be able to vote. If they wanted to say, well, we don't like a thousand foot setback, we want a five hundred foot and we want to add decommissioning, I think the county commissioners could say be, be.
You feel like we can work with this? Or does it need to be adapted? I know we've made points, Jeff made point, everybody made points about it. But are we, the process where this can be, you know?
Well, the county commissioners, I think, I don't know if she's saying, but I think the board of county commissioners is a lot for a more comprehensive.
Okay.
Solution. I, I can, you know, we'll act on this simply possibly to get it. But I can be, just my, I can be premature just to take this and say, here it is.
I always go with playing the game that, you know, trying to move it along.
We have to go through the advertising process. We don't have a hearing and all this.
Yeah, you have to advertise it days prior, set your date, and then, then it will be a public hearing.
That we're talking about, June, July?
Yeah, I think it would just, it would just depend on how, again, the planning commission can say, we like exactly what's here, move forward. Even then, then we still have to take it, you try to, the county commissioners, they do that. So it's not, it's not like something they can vote on tomorrow.
The zoning board would be better with a more comprehensive look at it.
I agree.
And that's really up to you, how fast you want to go with it. The sign of the ordinance rebuild was older than I thought it should have been. But I think between staff and county lawyer and when you guys talk to each other, you could have this done in a month or two, to where it could go to public hearing.
Right. And I, what I, all I was trying to do is, if we could amend it on the run, that's what I was looking. I agree that we need to put more in it, be more comprehensive. Is everybody on the phone agree with that?
Yeah, but can we go ahead and amend it on the run?
We cannot amend it on the run.
Can we go ahead and accept it as it is with a, with a, put a, known that we're still want to do some decommissioning as well? Like, can I make a motion to go ahead and accept the proposed amendment and that with a, with, with also adding in decommissioning verbiage down the road or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Chad, I want, I don't want to say that.
Well, I think you could make that amendment, or you could make that motion to say you want to accept this as is and add decommissioning. Decommissioning language will be added as well. But the other option would be to consider that a little more and say, do we want to do something a little more comprehensive and make sure we have all aspects?
Still want to have the public input. There would still be chance to amend it down the road as well. At least that would get the ball in play.
That, that, that's all I'm trying to do. It doesn't have to go to you guys now. What it does is, it lets, it lets the ball move forward by accepting this with additional changes coming forward. So then we can, we can keep moving it, you know, I mean, that just, that just, you know, checking a book to hand out, right? I don't know.
Well, again, it's either a matter of you adopting or looking at something today and saying, we're sending that to the commissioners right away. Or another option would be say, the planning commission is going to look at this and come up with something that includes decommissioning and everything else. I don't think it's, I don't think it would help to just say, we're going to tell the commissioners to, to, you need to send them a proposal.
The, the, the timing comes down to how long you all need to put together something to present to the planning.
And I don't think that should take super long. I quickly looked at some different ordinances. It's not super long. I mean, we can kind of copy and paste some general things. And then I think the planning commission's role will be looking at those details. Is a thousand feet a good setback?
Do you think you and the staff are going to have to, we have to, next meeting of the floor? I'm not trying to put, I'm just asking.
I don't know, because I'm gone two weeks, so.
You're on vacation, nothing else.
Yeah, got a lot of other things to do. So that, that just puts it in a bind. I'm leaving Friday and then.
Something good you can do because she did a lot of that sign on.
Good. I mean, I don't think, the signed ordinance was a little different. We created a committee and went to the public. I don't think we need that. I think staff can look at some different ordinances. But that's where I, you know, I put that definition of commercial solar, that was something I just pulled from another ordinance to, so we had something.
So, so again, back at the time, if you don't have, there was something that was after the planning commission by the next meeting, that's one one. It'll be the following meeting, which means it'll be two months before the planning commission potentially has to present something to the commission, correct?
I could try. I just, I don't want to make a promise when I get back to that week, you know, because there's other plats that may be coming in and stuff too.
But Bruce and Bob, how does that, you guys, is that, I mean, you look for something sooner than that? Or, I mean, you'd like to have it, I know, but I don't see.
I, I think that, you know, we need to produce permission for something, it's a whole thing, not just a part. I think it's possible that you could get it done in the next meeting, or at least an outline. And, and that shouldn't take that long. But in the next meeting after that, vote to pass it on, or even in the next meeting if you're inclined. But it really needs more than just that setback.
And what I would do, I'll let you in on a secret, is I would use Google to look at other solar ordinances. I mean, so anybody in the planning commission that wants to take a look at some other ordinances, you know, that's what I was planning on doing, just kind of looking at other jurisdictions, seeing what they've adopted. I think they'll all be somewhat similar. But they might point out some other things that we would say, yeah, that's good to clarify, like the residential aspect, that we want to clarify residential. You know, Billy mentioned different types of technology, you know, is there something that we want to be careful when we define this, that we don't define it too strictly or too broadly, that we want to make sure. So those would be the kind of things I would look for. I don't think it'll be super complicated. If anybody else wants to kind of review those, we can all be taking a look at it and then get back together. I think that the, the framework should be somewhat simple. The details will be those setbacks and things. Maybe, you know, we can even take a look at different parcels in the watershed and say, what does a thousand foot setback mean? How many parcels are over two thousand feet wide, you know, that you could actually have room to do it? How many are bigger? Where does that leave opportunities or, or not? The fracking was pretty strict and that was intentional. So that's the other aspect of that. So that, that's part of it that, you know, the, the planning commission needs to consider how they, if they want to make this a stricter thing because of the impact on, on this surrounding properties.
Well, we, if we, let's say Jeff makes a motion and we say, okay, we've got to add to it. It doesn't say when we sent it, but that helps, would that help speed the process if we accepted something today? And then because you have a chance to work on it, would that gain us any, any time or not?
It would, it would be official, I suppose, that you would say, the planning commission has agreed to initiate an amendment on solar and will begin the process of adopting the specific regulations.
Now, wait, we're, we're one step into it, you know what I'm saying? But yet, the data, I'm just saying, I'm just going.
I guess what I want.
What that?
That's really what the board, our board, was to get the ball rolling.
Right. That, that, that's what I was just thinking about when, you know, I'm not trying to push it faster. I'm just saying, I want to push it to where we're, so what I like to see is that, that, like, yes, yes, motion was accept to, accept this with new contingencies added. That gets the ball rolling. We're not sending it to them now. I may not send it to them next month. But that way, we can all kind of be looking at it. Like, say, if Jeff has some ideas, or Bill has some ideas, or somebody has some idea that too, we can be working, looking at that. And if you are your goal, maybe somebody, you know, somebody can, you know, pull around with it or something a little bit. But.
I think you could definitely make a motion to say, yes, the planning commission is concerned about solar. We, we're making amendment, we are going to agree to initiate an amendment. We're just going, we'll work on the details.
Are the guys on the phone okay with that?
Yes, I am. Do you want me to restate that? Or just go with what you said?
I want a second. David, you all right with what we're talking about?
I am.
Okay, Billy?
Yep.
Okay, okay, Jeff. Your motion is, go ahead. You might have to change your wording.
Okay. I moved that the planning commission continued the discussions on the amendments to the deep creek watershed ordinance in concerning the commercial solar energy systems. And by the next meeting that we sit down and talk about in more detail as the exact outline, and also consider the decommissioning and any other aspects that we would need to consider for this ordinance. So not pushing off to the commission, or to the commissioners, but to the next meeting to keep talking about this issue and develop this ordinance in a proper manner.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Everybody else okay with that? I got a second?
Second.
I heard a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? Go move, Chad. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to put you in, I'm just saying that moves it.
Yeah.
That moves it forward.
That makes it clear that you have attempted to.
That's what we want to do, right? Okay.
Right. And I agree with that, you know, if we can get something done next meeting, great. But I don't want to put Chad in a bind. That.
Oh, that's, I think we were just trying to get it. So we know it's being talked about and, you know.
That's all we ask for. Right, that's fine.
Right. All right.
Hey, I have a, I have a question. Where does that solar power end up going?
The grid.
Who, who benefits from it?
I believe the first one is a community solar. I received things in the mail about that where you basically join in with other people in the community, you're purchasing a portion of it.
A little co-op, right?
Yeah, kind of like a co-op thing, rather than you putting on your house. I guess the idea is that you, the people in the community go together and purchase a portion of that and then.
But the power is generated, it was under the grid, wasn't it?
Yes, but some, I don't know exactly how, all the details, but you purchase a portion of it, you pay them, and then you would get it at a discount. So perhaps, they told me probably a 10% discount maybe on your debt.
And you have to furnish your own extension.
But that's about all I'm.
But a lot of, one over by Kinston is going to have like 350,000 amp.
Yeah, and I don't know if that one's different. I don't know if that one's a community system or one that just feeds in, so.
Well, some of the stuff you put, runs back through the grid, like the windmill, right? Runs back to the grid. It's stored until it's needed. I'm not, some of.
I don't know if they store it, but it's, it's in the grid. It's just a percentage of the daily electrical.
Yeah, I don't think they can store it.
I don't know enough about it. I'm trying to read up on this stuff.
There's no storage capacities for electricity yet, not like that.
All right, moving on to the next one.
Yeah, so the next one, these, Bob had mentioned, these are amendments that we have talked about over the years several times. There are three of them. The first one, you have Bob's letter. I won't read through all that. Still will spend a little more time. Since he's here, he can answer questions and we'll talk about the specifics. You've probably all over the years heard the TBRUs for six to eight bedrooms. The way the ordinance is written right now, up to five bedrooms, you can do a TBRU. If it's six to eight bedrooms, you go to the board and ask for a special exception. As they become more prevalent, it puts the board in a rather awkward situation because people will sometimes come to these meetings expecting that the board can deny it. It's really hard for them to deny a special exception, especially as the, as the TVRUs are throughout the watershed. There's really no location that is inappropriate for them now. So what has been proposed is we would basically remove that distinction for six to eight bedrooms. We would amend it just so, it would just say TBRUs up to eight bedrooms would be permitted in all the same areas that TBRUs up to five bedrooms are permitted. So there would not be the need for that special exception hearing to do the six to eight anymore.
What about the sprinkler system?
Sprinkler systems are mandatory in all new homes. Changing the use of one that was, let's say it was seven bedrooms before, if they wanted to change the use to a single family, we would still run that by the fire marshal because they may require retrofit. So that wouldn't change. It would still, our office would still take a look at that in terms of egress. So there wouldn't be a change there. Just be that zoning hearing would be the only thing that would be changing.
Yeah, there's still a bunch of regulations going to TBR law. They have a lot of parking law stuff that we require when we accept a TBRU of six to eight. But this just makes enemies out of neighbors and it's, people, every meeting with special exception, permitted use. But people think we can, we can just say no, and we can't. Case law, Prince versus Charles, Charles, it's, it says, you're going to show what's worse here than anywhere else. And that's awful how I stand.
Let's take, let's do one at a time.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion unless anybody has anything else to say, but that's, Troy, or Tony?
Um, well, I, I think, and I don't, I don't know, you know, this is, again, I hate to bring things up during the timing of this, but, you know, one of the whole things that I think is just really, we missed the boat with is the, the parking aspect of that, where you're essentially turning somebody's lot into a parking lot when you have these bigger houses, instead of putting restrictions on the number of cars people can have or the number of vehicles that they can have if they're going to, you know, have a rental like most resort areas do. You know, you're, you're, you're cutting out trees, you're eliminating, you're creating more sound because of the, the, the fact that you have to cut out all these trees and eliminate landscaping privacy and everything else for the strict purpose of, of having a parking space for every bedroom. And then half these lots are too small for the houses that are, that are being put on them anyway. So on top of all that, I, I, I'm, I'm sure that, that this isn't necessarily something other people think about, but I think it's been a major, major thing that, that was, I think is a mistake, that, that we're not requiring the rental companies to just say, okay, you know what? You get so many parking passes with each property. If you, if your car's there illegally parked or whatever, and it doesn't have a parking pass, or, you know, some kind of a visitor pass, they do what they do everywhere else, tow the car away. So, um, it's something to think about.
Well, the zoning ordinance.
Why?
Why, why haven't they, why haven't they done that? Because everybody else does. I mean, everywhere else you go.
Well, no, no, no. I, I, I think it's because the, I don't, I don't know that it's a rental company issue at the moment as much as I think the initial thought of this was to create, you know, to, to try to not have problems was to create something where it said, okay, if you're going to have a bedroom, you have to have parking space. And for every additional bedroom, you have to have parking space. And now you go by these places and they're parking lots, you know, basically with a house on them. And, and whereas, you know, if you come where I'm at right now, Marco Island, or you go to Myrtle Beach or virtually any other place, you know, if I go to our, our place in, in Myrtle Beach, it's a two bedroom condo. We get one parking spot. That's it. And, and if, you know, if you want to park, if you want to bring additional car, there's a, there's places that you can go rent spaces, which they could do at places, maybe like fairgrounds or, you know, somewhere else to keep your additional cars. Whereas if, if you have an eight bedroom house, what's wrong with limiting it to four bedroom, or four parking spaces? And if you want to bring additional cars, then, you know, open up a potential place for people that are business owners or there's potential parking locations, that you can just park your car there for the week for blank dollars or whatever it might be. I'm just, just bringing it up because it seems to me like, like, I understand why they, they may have done it, but I think there's been a, there, there's been a, a separate effect of it now by the fact that half these lots are, are parking lots. So just trying to get us more consistent, you know, you're, we're gonna do a, we're looking at this thing with the, um, with the solar and we're gonna look at what other people do. And, and I'm just thinking that maybe we oughta, if you're gonna make this change, maybe there's some other things that need to be looked at too.
We've been six years on this thing, it's time to move. The parking issue, I understand what you're saying, it's a separate issue. It's addressed in a separate area, the ordinance. We're just trying to make six to eight bedroom, what is, what, what we're gonna do as a board anyway, approve with the regulations that apply now. If you want to change the parking regulations, change them. Let's not get into that right now. This has been six years, I want to get this done.
So you aren't, on this, so Billy, you understand what Bob's saying, is they're asking to take away?
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm bringing it up because I've been bringing it up here and there in conversations along the way. And it's.
We're just trying to.
And I, all I'm saying is that, that, you know, if we're writing notes down for things to, to be talking about, I, I'm not trying to, to interfere with any, anything else that's being done, but I think it's something that needs looked at. And especially if we're gonna, we're gonna make it easier for people to get approved, even though I know it, it's special exception makes it very difficult for anybody to not approve it anyways. And certainly not trying to bring more work on for Bob and the guys with the zoning. I'm just saying that to me, you know, if we're gonna make this change, then maybe there's other things that could be done to start to, because, because you're just gonna see more and more people go with these eight-bedroom houses because they're pulling in, you know, the, the people always think that, that rental houses are profitable. The only ones that are are the big, big, big houses. And, and, and as a result, it's also creating additional problems as a result of it. So if it needs to happen a different time, so be it. I'd just like to make note of it now, it's something to talk about as you move towards maybe other, other things that you do.
Well, parking is, you always bother me because, like you said, everywhere I've ever went, you got two, like I was just out of town last week and I got two parking passes for two cars, you know? And so I just don't understand why we can't get that figured out because, you know, eliminate a lot of problems. That's something that has to come through us yet, or is that something?
Well, again, you can, a citizen can do it, a planning commission do it, or the county commissioners can do it. I would point out though, you know, we are getting close on the comprehensive plan. We have a draft now. Typically what happens after you adopt the comprehensive plan, then you take a look at your ordinances. And that's more the big picture thing, you know, I have a whole list of things on my agenda to say the next time we take a more comprehensive look at that ordinance. So I, I think the TBRU parking could be something that we say as soon as we get the comprehensive plan adopted, then we take a look at it because it does point us and direct us to consider certain things and to change, make some changes. So I think those, one more bigger picture things we could do then, as Bob pointed out.
Yeah, so be it. I just didn't want to forget it and then.
Okay.
And, and if, if you're putting it in, just throw that, throw that on, it's something to discuss.
This was something Bob and I discussed over the years and we discussed it, I think, from the, probably a year ago. And then the coronavirus happened and it, I've kind of held off just because, you know, we haven't had public input as much. And I wanted to, so I just wanted to say, look, we need to get these done. We've talked about them too long.
So in his first paragraph, what you're requesting is do we deal with the word special exception for the DR?
Yeah, six to eight bedroom, just.
TBRU.
Require a special exception. And personally, I don't care if you make it, if they're not legal. We just have a problem and, and understanding, the board doesn't mind doing their job. We're there to do what the ordinance calls for. But the result is we've got people coming in thinking they can stop these when they can't.
Right, yeah, no, 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 you're, 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 it's a tough call for you guys because you're right. Everybody thinks that, that you have a way to just automatically stop it. And, and as we all now know, that special exception basically is, it, it's, the burden of proof has to go the exact opposite way with the way people interpret it, so.
All right, now my question to you, Chad, is how to, we cannot just write that from the order. We have to do the same process.
We amend, yeah, we amended. So what I've written there would be amending that to say we're amending that. It does not going to say six to eight bedrooms require special exception. We're changing it, it's just TBRUs up to eight bedrooms are permitted.
So we need to approve that verbiage and then pass it on to the commission?
Yeah, if you're okay with it as written. If everybody's okay with it, that will be, we could just forward this on.
You guys okay with it on the phone?
Uh, yes, do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Yeah, just the first one about the TBRU, six to eight bedrooms would no longer be a special exception.
When did, who's up there? Yeah, when did you go in?
Up in.
I move that the planning commission, uh, accept the propose, uh, to get, eliminate the special exception for the six to eight bedrooms and in accordance with what's written here to amend the section 157.024, to go ahead and have the transit vacation rental units for up to eight bedrooms and then delete the three other sections that correlate to the six to eight bedroom, uh, special exception. So basically we're eliminating the special exception rule. And then in addition to, uh, down the road, that we would look at the parking regulations for these, uh, eight-bedroom, uh, transit rental units. Are we allowed to say that?
And I wouldn't even want to limit it to just that, Jeff, that, that we're gonna, that we're gonna look at other things because I think there's, there's a multitude of things that need looked at, including setbacks, things like even lot sizes because of the impact that those houses have on neighbors. And, and, um, you know, I just, I think, um, I, I, I think we have an opportunity that if, if we're gonna take that away, which, you know, it is what it is, that then we need, we, we have an opportunity to look at other things. And I think we should look at them sooner than later. I think that should be a top priority when we do get into the, um, to the, to the other stuff that, that, um, that we, that we look at that carefully and, and try to come up with ways to, uh, not, not stop people from doing things, but, but say, look, you know, if you want to play in that ballpark, that, you know, you're gonna have to have certain limit, limited specifications in order to play in that ballpark.
All we need to do, Jeff, is back up the last thing.
Okay, uh, you want me to redo the whole thing again? I can.
We need the whole thing, Chad.
No, just do the end. Okay.
Guys, guys, guys.
Besides accepting the amendment that's in front of us, then later that, after the, we're done this comprehensive plan, that commission revisit the, uh, the parking and any other potential setbacks and regulations that involve the transient and vacation rental units, uh, to make it more, uh, I don't know what I want to say, I'll just stop there.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to, that process as soon as we get the comp plan adopted.
All right, I need, I need a second on Jeff's motion. I'll second. All right, I got a second. Jeff's live now, man. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, Chad.
Okay, okay, the next three on your list, um, if you look at the variance chapter in the zoning ordinance, in general, variances are only supposed to be given under, uh, when there's practical difficulty and hardship. It specifically says it's only supposed to be when there, it's something that's depriving the owner of the reasonable use of their land and no other case. The authority to grant variances is to be sparingly exercised and only under peculiar and exceptional circumstances. So it should be really tough to get a variance. There have always been three other categories in the ordinance that were called special powers and duties. So the first one there would be for rear yard variances on lakefront lots, basically buy-down lots. The other two deal with grandfathered structures and then certain small lots. It was always the intent to be, offer an easier process, that you wouldn't necessarily have to show all the hardship and everything. In those cases, you were usually looking just to say, is it appropriate for the neighborhood? Is it in harmony? The board could grant it. There was a board decision regarding one of the rear yard variances that got turned down. It went to court and the court determined that the board was not authorized to grant a variance without looking at all these standards, without looking at hardship and practical difficulty. So that has kind of put the board in a bind with what I believe was always the intent of the ordinance, that we had some variances that were a little bit easier, a relaxed standard. So what this would do would be to stop requiring variances for these and just to allow them outright. So we as staff could permit those. So the first one, rear yard variances on lakefront lots. Uh, so if you own the buy-down, you can go to the board now, ask for a variance to get closer to the rear line. What we would do, instead of requiring a variance now, we would just say, um, anybody who has the buy-down may construct a dwelling to within 10 feet of the rear line. If the dwelling will not be erected closer than 100 feet to the high water elevation in Lake Residential One or 50 feet to the high water elevation in any other district. So that would be just permitted without a variance. We would approve that in the office. If somebody wanted to go closer to than 10, then they would still have to go through and show hardship. Ask for a variance.
Everybody understand that?
It changes the intent from the previous ordinance to allow people to build to the line. Can 10 feet back from the line. But it still allows them to apply for a variance if they, you know, they have hardship, difficulty with their land. So there, there's a trade-off there. It's, the intent of the ordinance was if you had the buy-down, you ought to have some value to that buy-down. This was going to lead your values to that buy-down and so do the buy-down. And with that court decision, it, it made it more difficult to get a variance for that circumstance, which was certainly not the intent. So it's a, it's a correction to the state.
Anybody have any questions about this? What they're, what they're discussing is the, uh, eliminating the variant requirements for some of the standards, Chad was saying, and then go to 10 feet of the rear property line, right? Or lakefront property, right? And that, with that, you can do that without a variance, am I correct? And if you want to go any closer, then you still have to go through the variance process, but it's going to streamline stuff a little easier because most people request to go to 10 feet anyway, right? Or somewhere that neighborhood.
We see a lot for zero.
Oh, yeah, but I'm saying a lot of.
Well, this, yeah, as Bob mentioned, this was kind of the compromise we came up with. We're gonna go ahead and grant you leniency. If you really want to get closer, you can still show hardship, show that your lot's narrow and steep and that you need to go closer. This was an idea, you could go 10 with the house, next could always go within five. So you still have, it gives you a little bit of room to put it back on still.
All right, anybody want to discuss this a little bit? Anybody have any comments on it? Tim?
No, I'm fine.
Jeff, Jeff?
I'm fine with it.
Good.
Billy? Billy gone? He's playing on the golf ball. He's Marco Island, out of the field. You have anything to put this, Bruce? All right, I need a motion to accept.
Okay. All right, um, this, the second one was back when we changed the ordinance in 2010 after the last round of comp plan. The thought was there are a lot of very small lots out there already that don't meet the lake residential setbacks. So a lake residential lot is supposed to be an acre, has setbacks of 40 foot front, rear, 15 on the sides. We know there are a bunch of tiny lake residential lots out there, like on Marshall Road things. There was a proposal to say, well, if that lot is already tiny, why do we make people go to the variance? Let's allow them to have, if the lot is 60 feet or less, wide, 17,400 square, square feet or less, they can go ahead and do the town residential setbacks, which are 15 front, 10 side and 20 rear instead of those stricter lake residential setbacks. Originally, that was potentially just going to be added into the ordinance as something people were going to do. At that time, it was felt, well, maybe this would be good to do as one of the relaxed standards. So you still go through the variance, but it's an easier one to get. So now, again, we have that conflict where it's not really a relaxed standard, you have to show hardship. So this would move it out of the whole variance and it would just allow anybody with that size, small lot, 17,400 square feet or less, lot width of 60 feet or less, to go ahead and use the town residential setbacks.
You understand that? Anybody have any?
I'm good.
Proposed there? Bill, are you back with us? Bill? Anybody have anything else to add to this? All right, move to the next one, Chad.
Did we have a motion on that one?
Oh, we need a motion on that, I forgot. Motion. So moved. Second?
I'll second it. Jeff Conner second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the last one, um.
We didn't approve the first.
Who, who was opposed to that?
We, we didn't approve the first one, did we? The rear yard variance?
You got a motion.
I got a motion, it's, okay, let's do the first one then too. I thought I did that, but.
Okay, I, I moved to, I moved that the planning commission approved the, uh, rear yard variance on the lakefront lots.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Jeff, I, I got five right here. Okay, third.
Last one, uh, was another one that came out, uh, after the 2010 cycle, after we adopted the last comp plan and amended the ordinance. Uh, originally, if you had a grandfathered structure that was a little bit closer to one of the property lines, we allowed you to rebuild in that same grandfathered footprint. So if you were 30 foot away instead of the 40 foot setback, you just got to build 30 foot away. There was some concern at that time about the effect that might have on the neighbors if you built a really big house. So then we looked and said, well, if there's another single-family house within 30 feet, then you had to go through a variance and it became one of these relaxed standards. So this would basically make it go back to the way it was. Wherever that grandfathered structure was, if it was legally built, you would be able to rebuild in that area. The 30 feet became complicated sometimes because a lot of times it dealt more with how close the neighbor built to you than it did how close you wanted to build to them. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that one. This would basically just make it another thing that we just would do in the office. We'd look at the other valid site plan, we could approve it.
Any concerns with this one?
No.
Motion? Got a motion, yes.
Yes, I do. I move to re, uh, I remove to accept the replacement or enlargement of non-conforming structures and amend the section 157.126. Thought be section three.
Second?
Second.
I got a, I got a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
I'll prepare a letter then forwarding them, uh, notifying the county commissioners that the planning commission has initiated, wants to initiate the amendment.
Any other, Bob?
Uh, I'm kind of like going on the comprehensive plan and just, um, there's gonna be a whole lot of. That it will need to be done and, and this solves some major problems for our board. And so the rest of that stuff is probably not, if you guys want to do. These have just been major concerns of mine and my board for, for years and should solve a lot of problems with the public. Intent and all that. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to straighten that for me.
I'll talk, move through the process.
Congratulations, Bob. So you guys.
All right, what do you want to get into next?
Uh, let's real quick list of subdivisions, so I don't forget about this. This should look familiar, north shore west, we proved one last month, we did lot 17 last month. Uh, now they're looking to do lot 22, so. And should look familiar, I don't know if anybody has any questions about it. They have done this, um, just in a single family or single lots is how they prove these.
Anybody have any concerns over this? Motion to approve? Motion to approve? I got a motion second?
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. All opposed? All right, group. We have the comprehensive plan that are looking over. I don't know whether anybody's up for that. So the next, we've been an hour and some time here. Uh, what do you think, Chad? You want to go through some of it or has anybody had a chance to read it all?
I think the last time we said, let's, you know, take a shot at it and see if anybody's had time to take a look at it. Um, I will just a, a couple of things. I looked through it. I have some just grammatical things, punctuation that I will forward on to them. I don't think we need to go through all that. There is minor issue. Um, the only things that I really caught, again, the major things that everybody needs to look at. Are the action plans that are at the end of each chapter. That's where you kind of get to the real, the real meat of it. Uh, where it says, this is what we ought to do. So those are the things that we will then need to look at when we take a look at the whole zoning ordinance is the zoning ordinance in compliance with these things that we're proposing. One of the things on, uh, page two dash 20. I believe this was just a typo. It's a commit, consider amending the AGRA, AR and RR districts of the deep creek watershed zoning ordinance. To reduce the minimum lot width of 150 feet. I believe they meant to 150 feet. It's currently 200 feet now. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that was clear because that does change what our intent was. On page. The other thing was we had a, a pretty good discussion about steep slopes. And I think that they did not make the last change. So if you look on page. Two dash 37. In the action plan, it says update steep slope requirements and subdivision ordinance to further limit development on slopes 20% or greater. Current ordinance limits development on slopes 30% or greater. Through my notes, what the planning commission has come up with was changing that language to. Consider updating steep slope requirements in the sensitive areas ordinance and subdivision ordinance. If issues arise related to development on slopes 20% or greater. Um, so I think we had had a pretty long discussion about that and just weren't aware of any particulars where that was causing an issue. Uh, so we wanted to somewhat reduce that language to basically monitor it if there were issues without something, but not to go ahead and change it automatically. Those were the only two real things I noticed. The other thing that just popped into my head as I read it was. Um, and this is sometimes an issue with comprehensive plans. You never can predict the unexpected. Of course, this plan doesn't mention COVID. At all. So I wondered if we should at least put. Just at least a statement in there basically saying that this rough draft was already prepared and it's beyond the, um. Beyond the scope of this plan to predict what the outcomes of that. I think we're all in the construction industry and everything else, seeing a lot of outcome or effects of it right now. But what that means for the future is pretty hard to predict with this plan, but I thought maybe we should at least mention it a little bit.
Something that did long, what is long term effect going to be if we go to get.
Yeah, at least to put it in the plan. It seems kind of strange to not at least mention it in the plan. So I thought somewhere in introduction, just to add a. General statement. So those were my main things. So I don't know if anybody else had a chance to look at it, if you want to take. If you need more time to look at it or if people have completed a review of it.
I, I printed it, Chad, and the only thing I have, and this is really picky on page 111. Uh, we're using the same, uh, the museum for both enhanced quali, the same picture for enhanced quality of life and promote tourism. Can we find another picture? It's picky. But why do we have the same picture on the same page? I don't.
I'll make a note of that.
Yeah. Other than that, I haven't gotten into the details, but I got all two 75 pages printed out.
Okay.
I think what we ought to do since we're, uh, I'm hearing the same thing. I've looked through about half of it. And I think it's, uh. I think we take this month, everybody kind of get down hard on it. So we get it, get it figured out. Uh, maybe by next month we can. Set it all back. Uh, Tim, did you have a chance to look at anything? Tim, did you get a chance to look over any?
No, I haven't.
I know you, Jeff, do you have anything to add? Jeff, uh.
Nah, I'm rolling through some, you know, I didn't, I didn't see anything glaring. I mean, every time I look at it, I get lost, but, uh, I'm good.
I mean, that's just, yeah, I mean, like, yeah, that's right. You just have to go back at the act native thing and look at them. Cause the rest of it's pretty well. You know, pictures and maps and graphs and stuff that, you know, we've had before. Jeff Connor, you had a chance to, I know you went over some. Billy?
No, not at all, but I do like the layout of it.
Yeah, it's much, I think it's much more streamlined, yeah.
Yeah, if I had a recommendation, I would maybe before you dive totally into it. Skim through and at least hit all those land, you know, the policies in action. So for instance, the first. Page two dash 20, it goes through land use and then it will say land use policies in action. And they'll list eight things. Those are really, that's the, the summary of all the preceding pages and that's the important stuff because that moving forward. Says what we have to do. So if the plan, if the comp plan says we ought to do something, we need to do that. We shouldn't ignore those things. We always need to be in compliance with our comp plan. So. Yeah, that's kind of one of my first steps. I skimmed through and highlighted all those things, tried to compare them back to the meetings. Uh, other than those two things I mentioned, I think they caught everything that we had sent them, but this is kind of our last chance. If something jumps out as. Too strict, too lenient that we should amend it. And then if you go to chapter five, action plan, that is basically. A summary of all those. So that could be the other thing. Just skip to chapter five and look at that. And then. I think that helps. That kind of gives you an idea. This is the stuff we're trying to do. And then as you have time, kind of fill in, look back through the other things, all the supporting document. I'm not implying that's not important, but I know it's hard to find time to read through that whole thing.
So by our May meeting, we want to be, or, you know, May, May meeting, you want to approve this thing and send it where it needs to go next, I think. Make any changes or modify it.
Yeah, I think the next, we need to have it in a good enough shape to forward it to neighboring jurisdictions in the state so they can begin their review of it. So. If there's anything, you know, if there's anything, especially at least in those land use policies, that's what everybody needs to say. I'm good with all that. Good to start it around. And then certainly if we find some, you know, minor tweaks, we can do that later on, but we need to make sure that the, the, the basic meat of it is okay.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Chad, pretty well, that's it.
I think so.
Next meeting will be in May. Hopefully we'll be able to do some in person stuff soon.
I'm ready for that.
Yeah, thank you for your time, gentlemen. Have a nice day.
Without a match. Thank you.
Take care, guys.
Thanks, everybody.